Workshop meeting in Windsor Heights City Council come to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. Mike Jones. Looks like he's on Teresa harms. Teresa harms. It looks like she's still on the Zoom call just countering here.
He must have stepped away for a minute.
Mike's back, I see.
Okay, Teresa back?
I'm back.
Okay. Main thing that we'd like to address tonight is anything on the goals and objectives. We've had the opportunity to look at them for probably the last week. I know Mike added a couple of additions to that. Any comments, concerns? Dennis, would you like to make any comments or anything on those?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I work with staff over the last couple of weeks. We put this draft together for council to consider, and you've had it for a little bit of time. My hope tonight is for you to talk among yourselves and discuss what the council wants to do for your goals for, I would say, instead of just making this a 12-month goal set period because you didn't have those set for this current fiscal year. But this would be the goals and objectives that you would implement, starting, say, January 1st and going through the end of the current fiscal year, and then starting and taking over for the next fiscal year for the budget that we're beginning to put together for you. So these draft goals and objectives have been prepared, as the mayor has said. Mayor Pro Tem Jones did email back and forth with me and added the two Objective C and Objective D for goal number eight. And so this evening, I'm hoping that the council can discuss this and add or take away what they feel most comfortable for the goals and objectives for the city council going forward. And I'm here to answer any questions, and I have staff here to answer questions as well.
Dennis, first of all, I would suggest that it end on June 30th. Doesn't mean they can't be carried over, but that there'd be a summation of where the level is of performance or achievement on these goals on June 30th.
I really need the council to put together goals and objectives for the next fiscal year so we can begin putting the budget together. That's the point. And obviously, yes, we will be doing a, an year-end wrap-up for the council to let you know where we are in terms of these goals and objectives. But the main thrust that I really need the council to work on right now is to get something that's going to help us guide us in the 2122 budget.
Well, yeah, I understand that, Dennis, but if I, as I look at these, these objectives, and I gave you my suggestions on the structure of them because they're not measurable as a listed or written. But, but the second thing is, I mean, they're not new objectives. Recruit and train quality personnel and fire professionals. Chad's doing that now. I mean, it's just an ongoing thing. And we talk about the clean air and protection and, and that kind of thing. Well, we're doing that. Replace aging vehicle and equipment. I think we have a schedule for that. And so as I look at these, these things, they're just a continuation, I think, for the most part of what we already have. Correct me if I'm wrong, others. But that's how I see it. On goal two, that's kind of a new one, the objective A, as far as I know. But we know we need to revise the codes. It's being worked on. Mike Jones is leading that. And so, I mean, it, I think that'll be done real quick. Digital stories, I thought we were already doing that. Are we already doing that? Okay. And then it talks about the equipment revolving program again. So addressed twice. The CIP certainly needs to be done. It should be done right now. Extending out. So I think there's a lot of of things that are already occurring. And, and so I don't necessarily see a lot of fresh things in here, but I haven't gone through it. I've been, I've been out of, out of the city for a while. So I, I it just, it's just a cursory look at it, and it's certainly not criticism of anyone, but I just see a lot of repetition in here.
So is it, Counselor LaFredo, is it that you're looking for new things, not stuff that the city's already done?
No, well, it's already done. I don't think it's, it's a goal.
I mean, like if we're, if we're providing good customer service today, that's not something you would include in something?
No, I didn't, I'm not talking about the goals, Dennis. I'm talking about the objectives which should be measurable so that you can check and see whether or not they are meeting what you want them to meet at a certain point in time. And they're not stated that, probably number one. They have someone that's responsible for each of the objectives. You got to tell what the objective is and how you're documenting that. So that's how, in my mind, and as I've written many objectives, those things are essential qualities of an actual objective that's measurable. I mean, these are all great, replacing aging vehicle and equipment. And as I said in the email I sent you, I'm not arguing with any of the content. But we're just platitudes, basically, recruit and train quality police and fire professionals. Of course, we want to do that. But how is Chad, who's responsible for that, is he doing that? And, you know, he can only do it probably when he has an opening. And, and so I mean,
Just still LaFredo?
No, no, I think, I think they're statements. I just don't think they're objectives.
The, the tasks and the objectives that maybe Chad would be performing are between Chad and I. It's not between Chad and you or the community. It's between Chad and I. And I will, I will assign my staff members their tasks and their goals for the year, and they will agree when we meet on those tasks. This represents the goals and objectives of the city council. So what do you as a, as a group, as a board, want to accomplish, and what do you see as your vision for the community? You provide this as the 30,000-foot level view of Windsor Heights, and it's my job to fill in the support for that. So if you want to recruit and train police and fire professionals, that might not be Chad. I might find a better way to do that.
Well, that's fine. Then put you as the responsible person. That, that's fine, but there's got to be somebody in charge of it.
Yeah.
Well, then put your, put, put the city administrator there. And so I'm not arguing with that or even the content, but what I'm suggesting is, I don't see much new here. And maybe there isn't anything to put in new. It just my cursory response. And it, don't take it personally because it's not intended to be a personal thing. It's just trying to make it so that the council, as we set policy, understands where we are on you and your staff's goals and, or objectives.
That's the discussion for this evening. Yes, I agree. You're, I think you're on the right track, and I would ask that you discuss this with your colleagues and find out, are some of these old hat that should be removed? Or are the things that should be added to this that maybe should be new things that you'd like to add to our vision of what?
And I don't see it as a vision, but, but yeah, we could. And again, I think the contents are fine, but when it says implement policies, well, that's kind of council's job, give them policies. But I think it's your job and the department head's job is to recommend policies and practices. So anyway, it just, it's, it's kind of, as I told you in my email, I don't think they're written structurally the way they should be. That's my final word on that.
Just for clarification purposes, because I think I'm confused the more that I listen to the conversation. So we're trying to create the strategic plan, for lack of maybe a better word, for this city for fiscal year 21 or fiscal year 22?
My concern is 22, which is 2122, starting July 1st, 2021. I need this framework so that we can put a budget together and meet the expectations of the council. What I'm also suggesting is that because the council did not do a goals, such a goal set for the current fiscal year, that we extend this and apply it going forward, starting January 1st, and run for an 18-month period.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. So that helps me. So just at first glance, so I appreciate and understand where you're coming from, respect it, all of those sorts of things. The, the one thing I would, maybe a response to that is, I appreciate that the, that you and the staff do the majority of the work, but there are some pieces, I think, that, that are city council as well. So I don't think it's only just you and your staff. I think it is the city council as well. So I want that to be clear statement from what I think this is. So please think I, that this is our plan for our community, and everybody participates in the work, not just the city staff. So that'd be number one. So going through goal number one, so for example, so Objective B. So I'm, actually, before I do that, so one other thing, I also would agree with Mr. LaFredo. So I would have preferred, and I think I suggested this before, maybe not when you were here, Dennis, but that we are, I don't, I, I think the last time we did a strategic planning session was maybe three years ago, maybe? I don't know.
We had so many cities. We had a consultant in.
Right. And so, and I'm assuming that's where these things came from, some of them. I'm not sure, but and so what I, what I would love, and I understand we're trying to move it forward quickly and all those sorts of things. I actually had in my notes that I think this is okay for today, but I think we need a planning process for 2122, so which is very different, which is identifying new ideas and, but, you know, maybe, you know, we you know, try to do that in, I don't know, sometime, sometime soon. I just think that, that a lot's happened in our community since then, so I'd like to see us engage or involve in a more in-depth, you know, strategic planning session at some juncture. So just food for thought. But so if I'm looking, and I agree that there's lots of outdated information, I think, in here, and that in that it probably doesn't embrace everything, maybe a vision for moving forward and how we'd like to see that. So, but just a few little things moving forward. So goal one, Objective B, so it says expand anti-smoking activities. I think we completed that. I don't know that there's, if there's something else that somebody has in that space. I mean, we put in new policies. That's kind of all, like, we finished that a couple of years ago, so that's really outdated. And then in our membership in the Central Iowa Water Trails effort, I don't even really know what, I mean, I think we are a member, aren't we? I, I don't know that there's anything we need to, to specifically do for, for that. I don't know, but so I'd like to identify if we're going to keep this Objective B in here. So what would, I understand that it just said that those would be examples. But so that, those are outdated, number one. It says replacing aging vehicles and equipment. So is that really, is that really just the the revolve, the revolving equipment plan program, or is that something different? I don't know. I guess I'm asking for, for clarification.
Because it's another, other goal too.
Objective D, prepare and update a comprehensive emergency response plan in the event of a natural weather or natural weather disasters. I think this is any disaster. I don't think it's just a natural disaster. So that would be those. Goal two. Objective C, so it says improve the city's enforcement of nuisance violations. So I guess maybe just looking for, I don't even really know what's going on with that, so maybe that's why I highlighted that for, for maybe that. Investigate, goal number three, investigate and pursue new revenue streams such as membership fees for the dog park use. I thought we already talked about that and took it off the table, but maybe not. Goal number four, Objective A, review and revise the employee handbook. I'd love to also see the council handbook be added to that as well. Because I'm not sure of the last time that happened. I really like Objective C and D in there. For example, I thought those were innovative, and I appreciate the new thinking on those as well. And then we just don't have consistency. For example, in goals five and maybe seven and eight, we have launch a revised community concert series. Doesn't say with, but in some of the other ones, it says who we would do that with, and maybe we can just say community partners instead of identifying specifically who those might be. For example, goal eight, Objective B, we say, plan and hold new multicultural special events with the Chamber and Catch Des Moines Partners. But we do the concert series with the foundation, I believe, and the chamber. So just feedback on those pieces that maybe there's more consistency. The thing that I think we're missing is, we don't really have anything in here on trails or our bike hub piece, and I don't know if that's just to be considered in the parks plan. We don't have anything on special events specifically as a category, just kind of have them piecemealed throughout. And then I'm confused by goal number seven. So we have in here updating the CIP under goal three, but then under goal seven, we have Objective A, which is establish a long-term funding for, really, which is the pieces of the CIP, which I see those as being the same thing. So if it's different, I just need to know what that is. And then goal seven, Objective B, I would also suggest that it says pursue recreation program partnerships with the schools. Maybe we list community partners or education institutions and community partners, but we have the YMCA in our backyard, and so I would suggest that we add the Y to that piece as well. So maybe to, I have, I can keep going, but maybe that's a place to start the conversation, or if anybody has thoughts on any of the things I've discussed thus far.
Teresa, I would, I would, just for Dennis. Dennis, I need to clarify something you said. Are these just for the staff? I think I heard that you say that.
I said the opposite. This is for council.
Okay. That's what I thought. That's what, that's what we're talking about. And I wasn't sure when you said that.
So being that I'm the new person, and I'm not fully aware of how the history of your goals and objectives have gone. But traditionally, the communities that put together goals and objectives for their, for their budget development process goes this way. The council puts together very high-minded 30,000-foot level goals and objectives, which basically tell a story about what you're, you want your community to look like.
Correct.
The staff then takes that, and they internally put that together in terms of real nuts and bolts tasks and things they want to accomplish within the spending plan, and they convert that and develop that into a spending plan for the council to approve. So today, I'm looking for the, the guide, the, the vision of the council.
Well, the council has it. Like you said, council needs to establish the goals, actually. The vision and the goals, and then there needs to be objectives to carry those out. And so that's how I see it, but I don't think the councils has much input on the goals themselves. Again, I, I commend you for doing this and the staff. But as Tree said, there's a lot of repetition, and some has already been done, and some things don't need to be done like a CIP. And I understand the budget thing. I mean, that obviously is something we need to give some, some guidance on. We know we have one through the end of June, but I know you'll start on that probably what, real soon. Yeah, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so council, I think, needs to have with you there to help facilitate and maybe have an outside facilitator, as we did before. I'd hear from other council, what they think too, in establishing the goals. The actual goals that we see we want to strive for over the next five years, for example. And prioritize those. I mean, the last time we had prioritize them in those city surveys point out is infrastructure, streets, and sewers, which is a process. And it's an expensive, it's an expensive item. 73rd Street is on, on this, I don't know if it's on CIP, but it will be. And so we're talking about multi-million dollar expenditures here. So I don't know that we need, you know, we need operational objectives. But our goals, as I see it, are more global, long-term things. So the budget would have to reflect those in terms of how money is being used. Does that make sense to you?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, okay.
If everyone, go ahead.
I think it's our, as a council, our role is to establish and prioritize the goals for this city. And once again, we, like Tree said, we've done it once before, and I think that exercise was a good one. And it was real clear, and we surveyed the people, and I don't think it'll change from what it is right now, the last sort of show. Because they're very costly things. You know, the streets and the sewers, and we know we have 16 and a half million dollars at minimum for sewer needs. I mean, that's a lot of money. And, you know, you can't do it all but that's certainly a goal, the sewers too. And so I think council needs to get together with you, Dennis, and maybe a facilitator, and, and kind of argue this out in terms of priorities in form of goals.
Well, let me just throw this out there. I'm not arguing with anybody. You are arguing among yourselves. You're negotiating what you see the council, the city doing. I have no say in that. And I don't want to say in that. That's your issue. You, the five of you in the mayor are the ones that are going to discuss this and come to consensus. The things that are in here that look repetitive are repetitive because they should be repetitive. They should always be year after year. If you take out, let's, let's just throw this example out. Goal number one, replace aging vehicles and equipment. If you take that out and don't make that a priority, staff and I aren't going to focus on that. We'll still do it, but it's not going to be something we focus resources. That's going to tell us that to you as a council, that's not a priority.
That's the point of the ERP, though. That's
ERP is the mechanical way to deliver that to you, and I just need to know where your priorities are, and you need to agree on them.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to set the goals. I don't know that there has to be eight of them even, but we need to set the goals. I mean, they can be revised every year. You know, as things
Must be revised every year, yes.
Yeah, so.
The last time we did this, Mike, I think between the two councils that were together that made the deal, I think we came up with five goals going forward. And I think some of these are still there.
Whatever they are, and then to implement those goals, I think I agree with you, Dennis. It's really important that the staff that work for the city have a part in establishing the objectives that will hit meet those goals, that will address those focus points. Does that make sense or not?
Yes. So let's, let's go back to your, your example about recruit and train quality police and fire professionals. If the council agrees that Objective A should be in here as a priority for you, it's a step towards achieving goal number one, then Chad and I will sit down and we'll talk about how's the best way to do that, to hit that. And Chad will come up with some great ideas, and we'll land on one, and we'll put that in front of you as part of the budget, and you'll be happy about what you land on. Yes.
Yeah, in my mind, would not be a goal. That would be Objective under the goal because we know we want the best staff, period, whether it's the financial director, or it's the public works director, and
We're saying the same thing, Mike. That's exactly how I've laid it out right here. It's an objective under goal number one.
But, but you're, you're doing specific on just the police and fire. What I'm saying, we want all our employees to be top quality, not just police and fire.
Yes, and so then if you drop down to Objective E, the city should work to become an employer of choice for our employees and prospective employees by ensuring alignment of wages, benefits, and employee support to create a positive, engaging work environment. The only reason those are separate is because they're separate, they're separate animals. They're two different things.
Let me bite this up then. Okay, I'm saying that Objective A should be an objective. And it the goal is, I mean, it's fine to recruit and retain the highest quality staff that we can get and work with, and and so I think, in my mind, some of the objectives that are there would be develop ways that will ensure the retention of quality staff. I don't know whether I saw anything on there about retention, because I think that's important, as well as selecting quality staff, which you have in there. But I think if you want to, you can put an A, B, and C underneath each one to say police and fire, but I feel the same way about public works, workers, and our central staff, from the financial director to the clerk, to the, to Whitney's role, communication specialist. And so I think it can be tightened up, is my point. You can always put some, some things under, under things if you want to, for your benefit, operational ones. But I, I think this, just to be pretty clear, and, and I see a way of doing it, and making this a lot briefer and covering essentially what you have.
Does anybody have any objections to one through eight as being council-level goals?
Yeah, Dave, I think we do. I think we're saying we need to look at the goals. That's our role, is to look at the goals. So I don't know how many there are going to be. It depends what council wants.
That's why I say we've been, this is the second time we've gone through this. We're at, you know, we've got eight of them down there right now. Do you want to pick the top five of what we got, or specify some more?
Dave, I don't think we can do it tonight. I think we need a workshop. Maybe it's a half-day workshop to establish priorities and go through what we did before. It's a process. It's just not, sit down and write these out, and okay, let's go with it. It's a process, and it needs to be some discussion, and I think we need to have a facilitator there.
This is my first work session with a goal setting. This, this whole thing is new to me, and it is very confusing to me. I have really no idea what's going on because there's so much going back and forth, and I just, I really have no idea what is being said, and I hate to say it this way, but I, I'm more confused now than I was when I think I started at this work session. So I don't really know how to unconfuse myself. But
Susan, does this help at all? The council needs to establish the priorities for this city, representing the citizens. That's what the goals will address. And we've had surveys, and so we've got all that information, and so we can base it on those or do a new survey if we need to. Then the objectives, and that's, I think, where the staff comes in, is to find out how to reach those goals. And, and I'm not going to pick, you know, pick them apart, like I have a little bit, but the objective's got aligned with whatever the goals we have.
I feel like, I feel like we're getting lost in the process way too much, and that's especially the language that's being used. So I'm with you, Susan. I don't really, it sounds to me, if, if the council is of the It, it sounds to me, if, if the council is of the opinion that we need to have some sort of prolonged um work. You know, process, then that we will bring the goals to Dennis as opposed to Dennis bringing the goals to us. I think maybe we should just come to that conclusion because we're having a big circular argument about what are goals and how we do. Use objectives to reach them or what our objectives are and what our goals should be to reach those objectives.
No, I agree. Our, our main thing is to set the goals, the vision and goals for, for the city. And, and staff should put together objectives on how to reach those goals. Is, you know, and, and I think there's way too many of them and they can be. But yeah, I agree with you, Mike. Our role is to set the goals and the vision for this, this city. And we don't do the actual work, and so that's why Dennis and the staff are the ones, in my opinion. That will tell us how we're going to do it through objectives. And, and we want, we want, you know, summary. Summaries of how they're moving along, whether it's annually or biannually or whatever, how they're progressing on those objectives.
Essentially saying that we've wasted a half an hour because we decided, okay. Because it really would have been nice to know ahead of this workshop that. There was no. Desire to work on these particular goals and there wanted to be, there's going to be a creation of a different set of goals for us to start from. I think that would have been better than us kind of engaging in the circular conversation for the last half hour.
We just got these to discuss tonight, so.
No, we've had these and I think we've had time to look through and, and send objections.
Joseph, let me ask you a question. Are you satisfied with, has it written?
Yeah, because we, we set policy, the, the city staff and the city administrator create the, the details and they fill in the blanks. And I was satisfied with the overarching goals. I think the objectives can be massaged if, if we really believe that. Some of them should be changed or should be additions to them, but I think many of them are things that are ongoing and some of them are. You know, in six, seven and eight, I really like, and I think that they're necessary for us to keep moving forward and.
We could have eight. I mean, the goals are. Policy goals. And we're talking about the operational objectives. We're talking about policy here. That's why I think. If we're satisfied with the eight ones, then let's say that and move on.
I think we had a lot of good. Constructive, structural change to some of these that Teresa brought up, and I think that those were all very. You know, good to the operation of making this work, but I mean. We, we can't spin our wheels here. Either we, we should work with these or we have a full-on. Work session and, and like Mike said, you know, start from beginning and start over, but. We kind of have to do one or the other at this point, I think.
Well, I'm not satisfied with how, how it's just put together without council input on these things, the goals and priorities. And I like the survey thing to get your resident input.
Okay.
And I think we have that already, but. I just have one vote, so.
Mr. Mayor. I would, uh, in the interest of minimizing the damage and limiting the confusion. I would suggest that the council uh either take a voice vote this evening and discuss. Uh, decide on whether I should pursue bringing in a facilitator and scheduling a full-on Saturday morning to do this goals and objectives work. Sometime after the first of the year.
Okay, Dennis, can I just?
I don't think we can vote at this session, correct?
I didn't hear you, Treece.
I'm sorry, I was asking Aaron. Um, I don't think we can take a vote.
I don't believe that there is an action item on this agenda.
I just want for protecting our greater interest because nobody watches out for anybody else. I thought I'd throw it out there just for verification and confirmation. Thank you.
And to clarify, I'm looking for. During of your, sharing of your opinion, so I can get a consensus on this.
Dennis, well, only thing, and, and fellow council members. I don't think we have to deal with the objectives. I mean, I don't know who's making a big deal out of this, Joseph and Mike, or whoever else is acting like it's a big deal. We're setting the priorities for the city. And we haven't had input on these eight things, and I think we need to have as citizen representatives. And I think probably eight or more than we need. And. However, the staff determines the objectives to meet those goals. I don't think we need to spend any time on that. We want to look at them and know how they're going to do it and make sure they can measure that. But as far as actually doing the work, I'm not going to do the work. I don't think it's that difficult. I don't understand what the big, big deal is.
Does anybody have any objections about going forward with the eight, the eight g- goals that we have established on here right now?
Well, so one of the only ones that I um have, that I've thought about or that I think, we don't have anything addressing communication. And so that, that's my, probably my biggest concern at this juncture, and we know that that's a significant. Area that we lack and are challenged in, and so um, I don't know if it's, if it's. As a, as an objective under one of these, or if there's a separate goal for communication. And I know we have discussed these before and I've been chewing on them. Obviously, I gave feedback today, so it's not for a lack of looking or whatever. I'm a person who processes auditorily. It's, I'm not a big write-up dissertation to give you feedback. So I apologize if people don't appreciate that I don't send emails about my thoughts on this, but I am actually prefer. Conversation and a discussion with you all, so. Everybody learns differently, everybody communicates differently, so with all due respect, I hope we would have respect for each one of us. Because we all have an equal vote here, and not that we're voting on anything tonight, but we all have a say.
Well, I think this is really, Treece, I think this is really important, whether we have five goals or eight goals or, or six. Uh, but that council. Has a part in putting these eight or seven or six or five goals. Based on. Some additional information that reflects our community.
But Mike, we have been talking. We've had these now for a month. I mean, as far as the eight goals, Dennis brought them forward. We, the last meeting.
Treece, I know. I know. Okay, I know that and the objectives, I'm not sure, and I told you. If you want to approve them, you've got four votes. If you get three votes, you can get it done right now.
Get it proven anyway. We don't have an action item on the council. There's no vote tonight.
If, if we have a general consensus on this, the first meeting in December, we will establish that by vote. But right now it's a discussion, so. We're talking, uh, Treece, your comment on communications, would that fit supposedly like an objective or whatever under goal number two? Deliver exceptional city services? That would be something sub under providing the entire services?
Possibly. I, that's where I had as a possibility, and I don't, but. Does it just need to be an objective or is that, is it a goal? I don't know.
I guess the question, excuse me, I guess.
Did that, Dave, it sounded like me from some of the discussion, uh, the two Jones uh council people. Feel it would be kind of a waste of time to have a work session, and I'm not speaking for you, gentlemen, because certainly you, you're capable of doing that on your own. So that's an indication that they're satisfied with it. And tell me if I'm wrong on that. And. So there's two right there, so.
I think you mischaracterized what I said, but.
Well, that's why I'm asking you.
The, I'm fine with doing a facilitated work session if you feel like that would actually suss out the information that we need to gather. What our objectives and goals should be for the council for the year. What I'm saying is if we want to do that, then we should stop doing this.
I don't disagree with that.
Mr. Mayor. We are in no hurry to get this done, and in fact, today in an email response to Mr. Lefredo. I indicated that we could have another work session on the sixteenth. We could even push off the council adopting formally goals and objectives past December seventh. That's all fine. That works great, but I think the question that I'm really wrestling with right now, because I don't have direction, is. Does the council want to abandon what we've started here and move on to an official, hire a. Professional to come in and be a facilitator? And have a Saturday morning where you all sit around for a couple hours and hammer this out with a facilitator? Or do we want to continue on the work that has already started? I think that's an important question to decide right now, tonight.
I agree.
Yeah, Dennis, it seems to me, uh, we've done enough surveying and stuff that isn't going to change after a year. So we know what the residents are telling us, and you included in, in your first packet. We all have copies of that uh as reminders. So I, I think it's just a matter of setting the goals and what we want and how they're worded and.
That survey is three years old, isn't it?
Seventeen.
Well, I mean, I, I think. I think Dennis, I think this is a good framework. I don't want to use the word, words Band-Aid, um, but I, I think it's, you know, it has a lot of good ideas to get us to. You know, sort of through this fiscal year, but I think for long term, we are definitely going to need to have that workshop and. Kind of do it like we did at the end of uh two thousand and seventeen, where we all sat down and we took a, a night. And more or less came up with the goals.
So can I, can I then clarify a, a request that we could. Uh, work again, um, because I don't like to keep, I don't like to work, work, work for hours on, so I want to, would like to wrap this up. I have some really good stuff. I've scribbled a lot of notes, especially when Teresa was speaking. But could we come to consensus from the council that we're developing a framework for goals and objectives? That's going to guide us through the end of this year and help us put together a budget. But in that plan, we should actually establish this strategic planning um forum. Where the council spends an evening, we have a facilitator come in and take a grander look at the city more than just two thousand twenty-two. Is that fair? Because that's the message I'm getting.
I think that's what's being said, Dennis.
So that would include, and, and I said this in my initial email with the packet information from a couple weeks ago. That would include scheduling a brand-new survey. Seeing what the survey results say. Using that information to have a discussion with a facilitator to chart the course for the community going out twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
I think that's a good plan.
Okay, in the meantime, this evening, I know, Teresa, you said you don't like to uh put together. Long emails with your comments, and I've done as best the job I can of trying to get my notes of what you said and what the other counselors have said. But if anybody else has comments on this, like suggestions, Mike has sent me a couple already, and that's why I have additions from uh his emails. If you have something that you think would be a good way to say something better or combine a couple of objectives or something that's missing. Why don't we do that and send that to me when you have time and we'll schedule another work session for the sixteenth?
Sounds good to me. Any other comments or we'll go ahead and adjourn and look forward to the sixteenth? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Just to be clear, was it Mike or Teresa that had the motion? Right, okay. All right, Susan, serious?
Yes.
Mike Lefredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you much, folks. We will continue this as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.